Calls me in order. All rise, democation.
Thank you, guys, please. Heavenly Father, thank you for giving this opportunity to be here tonight to try to help this town go forward, give us the best foot forward, thank these people who came here tonight. Also, I'd like to call out the armed forces, defend our way of life. Heavenly Father, lead us out of this meeting tonight to safety and nourishment to this community. Christ night.
Amen. Loyal allegiance?
Loyal allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
To the council, we've got the agenda before you. Does anybody want to make any changes to the agenda?
Mayor, I would move that we move business item number two to the consent agenda.
Alright, that's designating the Buffalo Creek as part of the East Coast Greenway?
Yes, sir.
Alright, we'll move that as item number seven to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add Rocky Lane to number four under presentations for a presentation on economic development.
Alright, are there any other changes?
Also, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move item number six under the consent agenda. I'd like to move that to our next work session.
You'd like to remove that from the agenda and talk about it during the next work session?
Yes, sir.
I'll second all that.
I got a motion from Perry Harris to approve the changes through the agenda to have a second.
Second.
Second. Any other changes?
Mayor, I'd like to put in a closed session to get verification on personnel matter.
Go into the closed session at the end of the meeting.
Just that statue. Madam clerk.
143-318 dot 11A six.
I'll second that, too. If I need to.
Any other changes to the agenda? I've got a motion to the, I need a motion to approve the changes through the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda as amended.
Alright, second, all in favor say aye. All opposed. Motion passes. Alright, going to the first of the presentations, Minister of Oath to office to a new police officer, which I will do. Okay. Ron, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read this, I'd like you to repeat after me. Oop. Hi, state your name.
I will take the oath.
The undersigned, you solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will faithfully and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina.
That I will faithfully and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina.
To the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities which are.
And authorities which are.
Or may be established.
Or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
That I will endeavor to support.
That I will endeavor to support.
Maintain.
Maintain.
And defend the Constitution of said state.
And defend the Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
Not inconsistent.
Inconsistent.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
But I will be alert and vigilant.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
To enforce the criminal laws of this state.
To enforce the criminal laws of this state.
I will not be influenced.
I will not be influenced.
In any manner.
In any manner.
On account of personal bias or prejudice.
On account of personal bias or prejudice.
And that I will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of my office.
And that I will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of my office.
As a law enforcement officer.
As a law enforcement officer.
According to the best of my skills.
According to the best of my skills.
Abilities and judgment.
Abilities and judgment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Official police officer. At this time, I'm gonna ask for the utilities director, Ken Griffin, to come up.
And you'll be making up the presentations, do you have Glenn and Jeff?
Yes, I'll join you, but I'm gonna let you start running it. Mr. Mayor, right here.
Well, this is a very significant day. We have two very fine linemen that we were fortunate to hire a number of years ago, and they have gone through a very rigorous training and development and apprenticeship program that took well over four years to complete, going through levels one, two, three in the lineman development program, and all the way up to a fully certified apprentice lineman. The very significant number of classroom hours, very significant number of field hours being trained under supervision, and they have completed that program and done an exceptionally good job. And so tonight's the night for us and for the mayor and the council to recognize this significant accomplishment and reaching this milestone in terms of training that was provided by Electric Cities in North Carolina. Mr. Mayor, you're right behind me, there you are.
I'm here. Alright, gentlemen, if you'll come forward. I was talking to Ken before, I understand this is a lot of work again, is that right? Alright. I'm gonna let you have both of those right there, I'm gonna hold those. And for those, I'm gonna look at, hold these, they're both the same, so I'm just using one set here. And in this case, I talked to Ken before this, this represents a lot of work, I mean, multiple years to get some of these degrees. The first one's United States Department of Labor, the certificate of completion apprenticeship. The two of them both have completed the same thing. And the second one's a completion apprenticeship for power line technician and technician line or equipment. Gentlemen, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Oh, that's correct. Roy Jones is here for Electric Cities, and he also has part of your class presentation.
I'm gonna stand behind you, boy. As the mayor said, you guys went through the Electric Cities lineman career development program, and really, we know what's a commitment, it's a commitment on your time. It certainly shows a commitment of the town and their commitment and investment in you and your career and the interest they have in your career. I also want to say one thing, the most important people you did thus far was your families, because the most important thing you do and any of us do every day is to go home to our families. So thank you very much for your commitment to completion. Do have some certificates for you. Glenn?
Congratulations.
Good job.
Good job.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I do have three more awards that I'd like to present, and presenting these, I'm actually presenting these to the town and to the city staff, city council. Electric Cities each year looks across the entire membership of North Carolina of the public power communities and recognizes certain communities from the outstanding achievements that they have accomplished over the past year. And this year, I'm pleased to actually award the town of Smithfield and the staff with three awards, and let me describe to you what those awards are and what Smithfield did in order to achieve these awards and recognition by Electric Cities. The first one is energy efficiency, and there's three levels to this. There's energy efficiency programs that are offered to the industrial customers, and I know that the town of Smithfield has one of the most aggressive industrial customer programs of the Electric Cities membership. You've got, you've got an industrial customer that interrupts more load per month than any other customer we have in the entire system, and that in turn reduces the cost that Smithfield pays for their wholesale power bill. So congratulations on that industrial customer and working with them. But this goes down a step, a level below that as well. Also, you offer energy efficiency programs to commercial businesses to be able to go in and look at their lighting, look at things they can do to improve their operation and lower their electric bills also. You also have a program that you offer to the residential homeowners, and I know that we've had issues with homeowners here with high rates and things they can do to try to reduce their consumption, and you all working with Electric Cities have an aggressive program to go in to the residential home and meet with them one-on-one and identify ways that they can lower their consumption, which in turn does help lower their electric bill. We're doing everything we can to get the rates down, but there's also the consumption side of this as well. So congratulations on your energy efficiency program and all that you do.
Ken, if you'll step up, you two guys.
The next one's financial stability, and in this one, what I want to recognize you all, and once again, as we look across the public power community and some of the programs you offer, you guys go the extra mile to reach out, to put policies and procedures in place, you work with the city staff to put programs in place to help customers that are struggling to pay their bills. You offer different types of payment programs, different ways they can pay, and so congratulations to you all for putting policies in place to help those people in times of need. So thank you for what you do there. And then last, to round this out, talk about service excellence. One of the most important things the council and the city staff do is to maintain a professional environment where you're attracting new businesses, expanding businesses. When you have council meetings, you consult yourself with the utmost professionalism and always looking for an eye towards improving the community. And what can we do to make Smithfield and the quality of life of Smithfield a better place to live? So it's always an eye towards the residents of Smithfield and the service that you guys provide them, so congratulations.
No thanks to me. We'll thank these guys right now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, Ken, was there another item?
No, no, my fault.
Hey, Rocky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a pleasure to be here. I think each of you have a copy of the corrected and final strategic plan, economic development plan update. After our discussion and at the work session, we made some changes in it, and I'm sure you will find those changes. In 2004, in the offices of Electric Cities, let me take a break right there. Sanford Holshouser works, has done work across the country. Our various partners have had over 200 years of experience, and we've done work all over the United States and internationally. And Mr. Jones is sitting here, and I would say this to his back and behind his back, so let me say it to him in front of his face, that Electric Cities is one of the best economic development partners that we have ever run into and ever worked with. So my hat's off to Electric Cities and everything that they do for all their member communities. But in 2004, we did develop a strategic plan for the town of Smithfield, and we made recommendations in the area of economic development preparedness, target industry sectors, marketing and benchmarking the initiative's progress. The town engaged us this year to come back and update that plan. The scope of work included updating the economic and demographic profile, a review of the, and update of the economic development preparedness assessment, a review and verification of the target industry sectors, and a marketing plan review. Going through the plan, the economic and demographic profile has been updated, and it is a snapshot of where the town is today, an analysis of the changes that have occurred over the past decade. It does highlight areas where the town is trending positively and identifies areas that need to be monitored to ensure that they do not become a drag on the economy of the town and negatively impact the growth of Smithfield. We also conducted a series of focus groups and interviews to identify the town's strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, and the current responses were then compared to the information collected in the original study. As would be expected, some of the strengths that existed in 2004 continue to be strengths in 2014. Unfortunately, there's still some weaknesses that linger around, and the town has been working hard on those, but they have been hard to overcome. The town has done a very good job, we've found, in capitalizing on some of the opportunities that were cited in 2004, and new opportunities for emphasis were identified in this study. The economic development support programs were looked at again in 2014, and there were slight changes in how support programs were judged and viewed by the town and the folks and the respondents of the interviews and focus groups. We looked, we also looked at the economic development product of the town. Economic development product is buildings and sites, available sites and buildings to attract new and expanding companies to come locate in your area. And what we found is that Smithfield is in as good a shape as anybody in Johnston County. And when we looked at the counties that surround Wake County and Raleigh, Johnston, Smithfield is second to none, you really have a good inventory of good quality sites and your buildings, you've got some, a good building inventory. Now, you, all your buildings are not A-quality and are not as attractive as others, but you do have some good, good quality inventory. The economic development preparedness recommendations, there were nine that we made in 2004. We found that the town has made good or excellent progress on five of the nine, moderate progress on two, and have made little to no on the remaining two. The target sectors that were identified in 2004 remain viable today, and an additional sector was identified for new emphasis in this year's study, and that was residential and retirement development. Finally, we made recommendations and an action plan was developed from the research, analysis, input gathered during this update study. Sixteen recommendations and action steps to accomplish these tasks were formulated for this update, and also implementation options and benchmarking suggestions to measure your progress on the plan were outlined as well. Now, we are aware, and you should be aware, that you cannot tackle all sixteen of those at one time, that if you decide to move forward with a more aggressive economic development program, you probably, you need to prioritize those items and take a number of those items and make them an annual work plan. Take, work and take them off one by one. In conclusion, we find that Smithfield is a vibrant community, but it does face challenges, some small, some significant, and but the town can control its destiny and growth by proactively facing these challenges head-on. In some of the interviews and focus groups, one of the things that came up as a weakness was a lack of leadership, lack of vision, but I'm here to tell you, and I, from my perspective, that does not apply to this board, because I think just by the very fact that I'm standing here tonight says that this town has got, and this town board has got its eye on the future. You guys commissioned my company to come in and take a look at it and make recommendations, and you got it before you. So I, I think that you really have your eye on the future, and we have no doubt that you will aggressively address economic development in Smithfield moving forward. You have any questions? It was a pleasure to work on this study with you. I appreciate all the help and input that I got from the steering committee and from the town manager, and of course, from Shannon, she always was there to help out. As part of this project, as you well know, we're available for unlimited phone calls and conversations, so if you have any questions or you wanted to just discuss anything, everybody should have my card and my contact information, please don't hesitate to contact. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rocky. At this time, we're going to the public hearing section. We've got two public hearings, and we'll conduct each separately. The first public hearing is about proposed amendment to electric rates. The second one will be CUP dash 1407, Geissele Manufacturing Company. What I'm about to say applies to both. Anyone who wants to speak to any of those public hearings, I'd like you to stand up now and be sworn in, so we can get you all sworn in at the same time. If you plan to speak or think you might want to speak, stand up.
Do you solemnly affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth shall help you, God?
At this time, I need a motion and a second to open the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Alright, first public hearing, Ken Griffin, proposed amendment to electric rates to include the economic development rider, electric rate code dash ED dash one. Ken, if you'll present your information.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Last council meeting, you considered an economic development rider as a potential additional tool that you can use to help provide incentives to existing local businesses to have significant expansions and bring new investment and new jobs to town. And you were pleased with the proposal last time, and because of that, you asked to schedule a public hearing, which is something that's required if a new rider is being, if a new rate is being considered, and a rider does count as a new rate. This is a rider that would go on top of our existing rate schedule, in particular, on top of our LG2 rate, which is our medium-sized industrial class, and our condition is set forth in terms of applicability. And then you have the option in terms of how long you wish to provide this rider for to a particular applicant, and it's a sliding scale based on the number of jobs that would be created by this existing business. And I can answer any questions that you might have.
We discussed this earlier, does the council have any questions for Ken?
I do have a question. And we may have needed the Electric Cities guy to stick around, but on the, well, I'm sure you can handle it, Ken. On the load shedding generator.
Yes, sir.
If a business can shed, this is a ques, if a business can shed its load thereby avoiding peak prices, does that help other customers?
It helps, it helps the town as a whole. There's a real incentive to us as a town to have load shedding customers. Our bill is significantly reduced. And then when you look at what your rates need to be when you, when you do a rate study, the fact that you have lower bills to work with does make a difference. And because of, because of that, immediately, what you have in this load shedding rate that you already have on the books is there is a lower rate for those customers. So those customers immediately receive that benefit. Not only are they not using electricity during that period of time they're running their generator, but, but during that period of time, they also, during all times, they get a lower rate, because they've availed themselves to that program that helps us. It knocks the most expensive part of the energy that we purchase off the top, and hence we pass some of that benefit on to the customer.
In this proposal you have before us, it says the capital investment of a million dollars in planning equipment, it says which may include the capital cost of purchase and installation of a CP load shedding generator.
Yes, sir.
Did you look at the possibility of making that a requirement, that you have to have a million dollars investment and have a load shedding generator, or does that even make sense to have it that way? Because right now, it's permissive. We're not requiring them to have a load shedding generator.
That's right. The idea here, this rider, was, was to provide that incentive to do, to do both, to both purchase and install and operate the generator because of the great benefits it makes overall to our bill, and hence the benefits they receive in terms of a lower cost, but also to then add additional jobs as well to our community.
I like the, I like the rider. I think this came up at the last meeting, concerns that we're doing this to attract new customers, what are we doing to help our existing customers? And my question to you is this, what if I'm a business and I employ 100 people, and I decide I'm leaving town? And is there a mechanism for the, for the town of Smithfield to come back and say, hey, we don't want you to leave, we can offer you this economic development rider that it might help you stay?
Well, a partial answer is that, first of all, this was designed specifically for existing businesses. If you like, if you like this, and you'd like me to go further, at a future meeting, I can give you an economic development rate, which would be for whole-due businesses to come to town. In this particular case, the incentive is for an existing business to expand in town. And in fact, what brought the issue to a head was there is a significant local business who is considering exactly what you're, what you're mentioning, and we're trying to do just the opposite, saying, well, why don't you stay? In fact, why don't you move everything here to Smithfield? And hopefully, this, this is enough to put it over the hump, but they decide to make that decision. It's a pretty attractive package, and when you do the analysis and you, you look at what can be done with virtual meters, reducing from two meters to one, one virtual meter, what can be done with this rider, and what can be done with the existing load shedding rate that they're not on, because they don't have a generator, they get a very attractive reduction in their overall bill. And the analysis that we provided to the customer, and that we'll provide again if you choose to adopt this, is in fact, they would be paying less if they moved all of their operations here, they'd be paying less than they'd be paying now for their current operation.
So Councilman Ashley, we actually discussed that with Ken in our work session, that was one of our concerns as well, so I know you weren't at that meeting, but it's, it's something that we did discuss, and I think it's a good idea that we, once we get through this one, if we do, that we move forward and instruct staff to start looking.
We can, we can bring you an economic development rate, so that you could use that as a tool for any business that's not yet here that you'd like to attract to Smithfield.
Any other questions for Ken?
The act, we're having a public hearing, and the action requested on this form is to conduct a public hearing. Is that correct?
That's correct. The change, the change in electric rate, we have to have a public hearing. Once we finish talking about it, we'll open it up to the public and let them ask questions about it. We're making a change to our rate, which is this new rate, which is an industrial rate that if they put a generator in and shave off their peak time, we're gonna give them a five-year little boost to help pay for the generator, and it's, it's an economic development. And it's, it's an economic development.
So we're voting on this tonight?
We can, or we can delay it. We can have the public hearing and not vote on it. We can have the public hearing and just delay it and have some more discussion, and then vote on it next month. But, but there's no real demand for it to be passed tonight. I mean, we can, but we don't have to.
Well, the reason I said the action requested is to conduct a public hearing for adoption.
That's, that's correct, but, but we don't have to. But we're going to have to have the public hearing before we can adopt it.
I see what I'm saying.
It says down there, adopt it. Next.
Okay.
And, and I was going, I was, I was planning to ask for a motion to adopt it after this public hearing.
Okay.
So any other questions from the council? All right. Well, I'm gonna, I'm need a motion to close a public hearing for this proposed amendment to electric rate. They come in after we've finished. That is correct. Um... At, at this time, does anybody from the public want to make any statements or ask any questions of Ken? Yes, ma'am. Did you, can I get you sworn in?
I do.
Are you, or not? Would you like to make a comment?
Yes, I'm, I'm just wanting to...
I'm, I'm sorry?
I'll ask some questions.
Okay, you'll have to be sworn in. Please come up to the podium.
Um, I think I've discussed this with you guys before, this business coming to town. My question that my client wants to know is, if they go and buy this, um, generator, what is the cost offset going to be for them as far as in savings, if they're going to spend a tremendous amount of money for this equipment? Plus, when they do the design for their building, they're going to have to have that set up so that it can be placed where it's in a quiet area as far as the noise. Um, have y'all had any discussions on how to help them? Because the last time we discussed it, we were going to have to go to Fuqua or somewhere to actually visit a restaurant or something that already has it.
Two answers. One is, um, this rider is dealing with, with an existing business that's expanding. Number two is, uh, in general, we already have the load shedding rate and load shedding program. And yes, it is a significant investment, uh, for any, any, uh, commercial industrial businesses to take. What we can always do is, is to, uh, work with the, uh, work with our customer, and work with the, I have a vendor in mind, I have a, say, quote from the vendor. We can do, we can help do a cost benefit analysis and payback. How long will it take for that generator to pay itself off? And then I have the cost savings that we have by having a load shedding rate. Just to say, to us, what's the cost of interest that we have?
My question to that is, if you're allowing five years break, is that what I'm saying?
This, this, we're, we're, this public hearing is about a new electric rate for, for people to encourage people to move to Smithfield or bring more employees to Smithfield.
Well, that's what we're doing, but you're saying it's a five-year break that they have. What if the cost of that equipment overrides?
That's, that's a risk they're going to have to take. And the current people in Smithfield who have installed generators have gotten no breaks. So this is, this is more than any existing customer's gotten for the last thirty years.
Okay.
It can be up, the way the rate is written, it can be up to five years. It may not be five years. It depends on a certain criteria met, the number of new employees added, and things like that.
Okay.
And, uh, point out, this rider is for the, the LG two rate, which is a medium-sized industrial business. Now, the, the low shedding rate that we have on books now, we, we have, that applies to, to any of our commercial industrial businesses. And I think the customer you're talking about, they certainly qualify for that existing rate.
Okay.
And we can help, you know, do that, create a return analysis, in terms of, you can see how long it'll take to pay back the investment.
So you're saying, you're saying that would benefit over the discussion of trying to get the light bills even lower? That is a program that will still be available once this always resales?
I, I, I think we're mixing up two different things. There's a lot of different rates. We have a current low shedding electric rate now, which if, if, and I'm not, I'm not familiar if you're a client, but, and this, then we have this public hearing, which is for, for kind of an economic development rate, to, to encourage people to come into town. But in terms of, of, of return on investment and the payback period, that, that, there's a lot of calculations. I don't think any of us in this, that this council are ready to do right now.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
That's a bad answer, but that's, that's the only answer I think you'll get. Are there any, any other questions? Okay. At this time, I need a motion to close this public hearing.
Make a motion to close this public hearing.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
At this point, the council, if they, if it wishes to, can go ahead and adopt this motion, or we can delay and defer it and adopt it. When you feel more comfortable.
I move we adopt the economic development rider ED one.
I'll second the motion.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. We've got another public hearing coming up. It involves Guysealy Manufacturing Company, which is a family business of which I have had some experience with. This is, my father's the one who's presenting this. So I'm going to recuse myself, and let the mayor, Pro Tem, Andy, run, run the meeting from here, and I'm going to step out of the room just for a minute.
Uh, do I have a motion to, to allow the mayor to recuse himself from this public hearing?
So move.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I have a motion to open the public hearing regarding CUP fourteen zero seven, Guysealy Manufacturing Co- Company. An applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to operate an automobile storage yard on property located within a B three zoning district. Do I have a motion to open a public hearing?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Turn it over to, Mr. Emblor.
Thank you, uh, mayor Pro Tem and, and council. Um, this, um, conditional use request involves a six-point zero-five acre tract that is currently zone B three. It's immediately located, uh, to the west of the cemetery, uh, and between it and the food line, and behind the old Wendy's, uh, in West Smithfield. There does not appear to be any environmentally sensitive areas associated with the project. As I mentioned earlier, it's zone B three, and it's, um, uh, that has been the use ever since it's been annexed into the town of Smithfield. Um, the...
Hold on one second, please.
The, um, adjacent zoning to the north is, uh, B three, uh, which is a strip commercial. That's the food line center. Uh, to the south is, uh, office and institutional, which is the town cemetery. To the east, it is B three and R six residential. Um, and then to the west, it's office and institutional, and it's multifamily assisted living housing. The applicant had originally provided a sketch for the automobile sales lot, or manufactured home sales, on the front portion of, of the property, and to the rear, a vehicle storage area. The applicant provided staff at a, a later date, uh, on September the second, stating that his intent was to remove the automobile sales from the consideration at this time. Um, I will point out that manufactured homes are not a permitted use within accordance of our, um, UDO ordinance, our zoning, uh, the B three zoning district does not allow for them. Uh, the applicant has provided a revised preliminary site plan, which is in your package, and, uh, is dated September the second, two thousand and fourteen. The plan indicates that two hundred and thirty-four cars can safely be accommodated on the rear portion of the six-point zero-five acre tract of land. The site plan indicates the existing fence will remain on the property, and, and with no office building, uh, location is shown on the plan. Uh, excuse me. The preliminary site plan indicates that existing fields will remain, and no office building locating, location is shown on the plan. The application has stated, the applicant has stated that the front portion of the lot will not be improved beyond perimeter landscaping at this time. However, there will be provi- uh, provisions for a paved access drive from US seventy west, uh, to the rear storage lot. Buffer yards are shown on the sketch plan, and it appears to meet the minimum requirements of Article seventeen of the UDO. This includes fifteen-foot street yard adjacent to West Market Street, a ten-foot buffer yard adjacent to, to the cemetery, and a twelve-and-a-half-foot transition yard, uh, adjacent to Windsor Place Housing Development, and a forty-foot buffer yard adjacent to the undeveloped residential property in the rear, and an eight-foot transition yard to the commercial strip center where the food line's located. Vehicle storage is considered a commercial parking lot by definition, is found in our UDO, and it must be graded in surface with blacktop concrete or brick paving, or other such surface material to ensure a dustless surface condition in accordance with the Article eighteen of the UDO. Stormwater facilities have been shown to the rot lot on the rear of the property, and, uh, that will be part of the permitting process if, um, if the conditional use permit is granted and goes forward, uh, the stormwater management plan will have to be provided to the town. Uh, as far as consistency with the strategic growth plan, the comprehensive plan has identified the majority of the property as being suitable for commercial uses, and the very rear of the property being reserved for a buffer. Consistency with the unified development ordinance, the vehicle storage lots are permitted within the B three zoning district with a valid conditional use permit. Manufactured home sales lots are not and should not be considered for permitting at this time. The applicant will be responsible for submitting a preliminary site plan that shows the applicable minimum development standards and can, can be met and will be met prior to, uh, zoning permit ish, being issued. Compatibility for, with surrounding uses, the compatibility with surrounding uses can be anticipated, uh, given the type, size, and intensity of the proposed automobile sales lot, the vehicle storage, given is close proximity to adjac- uh, is also in close proximity to adjacent senior living facility and cemetery. Um, there are some existing signs on the property, but they will not be, um, a, a problem in this, the development. All signed permits must be submitted and approved independently. Fire protection is provided by the town. There should be no impact on schools or parks and recreational facilities. Access will be permitted by US, uh, NC DOT on the West Market Street, and water, they will be a water and sewer customer of the town of Smithfield. The electrical provider will be Duke. Uh, the planning board at its September the fourth meeting voted four to three to request, um, to table the request for thirty days, and then, um, the planning board requested the proposed tenant of the vehicle storage lot to appear before the planning board at its October the second meeting, two thousand and fourteen. At that October the second meeting, the planning board took it under consideration again, and this time voted six-one to recommend approval of the proposed vehicle storage lot on the portion of the property located, uh, within the B three zoning district, which is to the rear of the screened in, uh, the fence that exists on the property now. Uh, the planning boards recommend, recommends that the town council make a determination if any adverse impacts of adjacent land uses will occur, and that the site plan needs to exceed all minimum development standards to include adequate buffers as required by the town. The town council has now requested to review the application for vehicle storage lot on property within the B three zoning district and make a decision in accordance with the finding of fact, which is included in your packet. Uh, if the town council determines that adverse impacts are created by the request, then the town council may either deny part or all the requests, or place conditions on the conditional use permit that will mitigate such impacts. In your packet, starting on page, um, nineteen, you have, uh, the finding of fact that, um, go forward, there's, uh, a total of four finding of fact, and then one overall. Um, you have, uh, copies, uh, copy of the planning board meeting minutes on page twenty-seven. And in addition to that, at the rear of the, the, uh, have the exhibits from the, uh, owner in regard to, uh, the site plan submittal, the application request, uh, those are there for your review. Let me give you just a little orientation on this. This is the, this proposed project site. This is US seventy. Uh, McDonald's sits about here. This is the old, uh, Wendy's store. This is the town cemetery right here. The access drive is proposed, it is a joint shared drive with the old Wendy's. He is proposing to put a, a twelve-foot paved drive that will come off of seventy, come back and access this area. And here would be the proposed paved portion of the lot. There would be a gravel portion that is proposed to remain over here. This would be the actual area where the vehicles would be stored, and then this is the proposed stormwater management facility that we approved as part of the site plan process. Uh, you have some additional information in your packet that shows a landscape plan for the entire development, when the car lot was going to be out front, and you, uh, and it shows, uh, a more expanded auto storage area in the back, and it shows it all being paved with landscape islands. And then you have some renderings on the, the last page of the presentation packet there. So with that, I stand open for any questions that you might have.
Paul, will I take it that page fifty-one is irrelevant at this point?
Uh, yes.
The storage area, I'm going, this appears to be the same as page fifty, except this is colored.
That's correct.
So the, the yellow area would be the storage for the vehicles?
That is correct.
Would it have, that would have to be paved?
Yes.
Would it have a fence around the storage area?
There is an existing fence completely around the storage area now. It's around the, and the fence is around the entire storage area, including the gravel area that's adjacent to the paved, the proposed paved area.
Paul, would there be any additional landscaping to this, to the fencing of the storage area?
It will have to meet the minimum requirements of the town of Smithfield, which basically states that the side rear and front yards will, um, have to be landscaped, uh, to the town standard, which is same for any commercial development. In essence, what that means, on, um, uh, the street yard, there would be one understory tree at least ever fifty feet, and there would have to be two shrubs, uh, ever five, for ever five feet of frontage. On side yards and rear, rear yards, it would have to be one shade tree per, um, ever fifty feet, or two understory trees, like crepe myrtles or Bradford pears, something of that nature. And then it would be one shrub ever five foot. So there's a mathematical formula of what the minimum is required. In addition to that, uh, uh, the council can take into consideration of replacing additional landscape requirements for additional buffering and screening, uh, that you might see fit.
Paul, a few, I'm sorry, a few months ago, we, we voted on this, on something similar to this, a car lot in the same property. I, I, I'm a little confused on, why is this being brought up again? Because we made it...
Well...
We made it, we voted that night that it would not be zoned as, as a car lot. What is the difference between this and that applicant's request?
Each request has to be considered on its own merits, and every, every case is a little bit different. There's actually been three separate conditional uses requested for this same piece of property over the last four or five years. Two of them had to do with vehicles, one of them had to do with a multifamily housing project. Uh, the multifamily housing project was a tax credit housing project. It was going to be about seventy units, if I recall correctly, and the council approved that one. Um, the initial request that came in was a, um, a similar request to this, although there were some differences in it. The gentleman wasn't, uh, proposing to pave the lot or any, there were some things that he was proposing to ask, uh, additional consideration from council... was proposing to ask additional consideration from council on. And then the most recent one that was in here within the last 12 months was a development for an entire car lot there that could have had somewhere in the vicinity of 500 to 600 cars on the property. It was INR Auto, and the council had some concerns with that because they could, the people that made the application could not tell the council and insurer who the owner of INR Auto was. And there was, the council had some consideration and concerns with that, and so the council denied that one.
Paul, we spent a lot of time talking about beautification of the entrances in Smithfield and on the west side in particular, and I think we're actually going to hear something about that later. I guess one of my concerns is, I understand the proposed storage lot is 580 feet from Highway 70. If we grant a conditional use permit, well, first of all, can we grant a conditional use permit for a small rear section of one parcel of land? And then my second part of that question is, are we opening ourselves up to grant a similar conditional use permit closer to Highway 70, which might support our efforts towards beautification?
Well, to answer your first question, yes, you can conditionalize, place a conditional use permit on a portion of a property. It does not have to be the whole property. Secondly, any auto storage area or any auto sales area would have to come before you for conditional use approval unless the ordinance has changed. So the council would have an opportunity to review each one on its own merit.
These things are always a balance between our regulations, our intended future growth, and also the landowner's rights. I think it is good that this storage area is so far off 70. I would just want to make sure that it's, when you ride by, that we don't see a storage lot. I think that's the intent of the landscaping is to buffer it and hide it from sight.
Our ordinance speaks specifically to two things landscapers to do. One is to buffer from the public street, which is US 70 in this situation, and adjacent properties, particularly residential properties. And our buffers are set up and structured based on the adjacent land uses of how big the buffer is. If it's adjacent commercial use, it's basically a 10-foot buffer. If you go to residential use, it's adjacent, it goes to 40 feet.
Paul, is it in our codes, is there a difference between an auto storage and a junkyard?
Our code does not differentiate between the two, to my determination.
Does the applicant intend to, I know there's an existing fence, but does the applicant intend to fence the entire storage area, which means he would have to just move part of the existing fence to come down the west side?
The applicant would need to speak to that. I do not know.
Any other questions for Mr. Ambler at this time?
I have an irrelevant question.
Nothing's irrelevant.
The south side is zoned O and I, and its existing use is a cemetery. Is the cemetery permitted use in the O and I, or is that just overlay zone after the cemetery was already there?
All the town cemeteries were zoned O and I when I came here, so I'm assuming that's a carry forward. We just carried that zoning forward, so.
Permanent office.
When I mean, outside and underground, or what?
It's definitely institutional.
Any other questions at this time, Mr. Ambler?
As far as our zoning, we're looking at how the zone thinks is differentiating between a, how the bill lot, both the home and the store lot?
The council back in early 2001, 2002 timeframe, prior to my coming here, did some wording change to the document to differentiate vehicle sales and what constituted a car lot. That is, a car lot is fairly well-defined in our ordinance. There are some other things that it probably needs some more work.
So this is not a car lot, this would be a storage lot?
That is correct. And our, as I mentioned earlier, there is ambiguity between junkyards and car lots. Matter of fact, our ordinance doesn't even speak to junkyards.
Well, I think that since you've got a conditional use permit, you basically are allowed to put restrictions on the property so it has no adverse effect on the property. So how it's classified is not as important as whether or not it's going to fit in those districts. It's well buffered from adjoining properties. Obviously, here you've got a possible application that has very low traffic, very low impact, very low noise, no nuisance, no smell, and is hidden in the back of a potentially well-lanscape area. That would be the argument, wouldn't it, for the proposal?
I would suppose it could be, with the exception that our ordinance clearly states in the preamble to the conditions that if it is not specifically addressed in the table of uses, it is specifically prohibited.
So is it allowed in the code?
There are provisions for storage areas, but there are not provisions for junkyards. So what is the definition of this? Is it a junkyard or is it a storage yard? Are they all repo cars that are in good condition and drivable? Then that probably could be defined as a storage yard. If they're wrecked and brought in, then I don't know how you classify that.
But currently, we don't have it defined as you just spoke, do we, in the ordinance for the code?
I would have to go back and do some more looking into it, but I know when we first considered this several years ago, we were really struggling with it as far as what is it actually classified? What would it be in function versus what would it be by ordinance?
The applicant is here and duly sworn. Mr. Lampy, do you agree with the testimony that's been presented by Mr. Ambler?
Yes.
Do you have any other additional information that you would like to share with the council? Come on to the podium.
I bought this property in June, last summer, at an auction, and then I began to wonder what to do with it. And various people wanted to rent it, and one man wanted to rent it was, he was from Florence, South Carolina, and he repossessed cars for national credit agencies like GMAC and Ford Credit and et cetera. And he didn't have any location in this part of the world to store cars he would repossess. Those cars typically would be one to six years old from new car dealers, and he needed someplace to store them. So that's when I started talking to Mr. Ambler about it and the town planning board. I feel like that the fairly late model used cars would be satisfactory, and there would not be any work done on site. It's just a matter of storing them one or two nights or a week or two weeks until they could take them up. So the landscaping would be like Mr. Ambler mentioned, it'd be done according to town ordinances, and we would have a thick buffer strip around it. There'd be no noise, not be open to the public. There might be one or two nightlights, and there wouldn't be any loudspeakers or, we might have a small office there with a telephone in it, but there would not be anybody there on duty. So, but since this lot is 580 feet from Highway 70, and according to town ordinance, we'd have to pave a driveway from the highway 580 feet long before we even got to the town lot, the lot. The lot's completely enclosed with a separate fence in the back. It would have its own stormwater retention pond. And I agree with everything Mr. Ambler said, except I'm asking the town council if they would permit this facility to be landscaped and prepared and rented without paving it. Because I don't want to pay 580 foot of road and then have to pave the lot also. And since we would have a retention pond on site, if there's any stormwater runoff, it'd be caught there at that site. So currently, the whole site, the whole six acres is with graded with one to two-inch gravel, which is a very good surface. It's well-packed, and it's almost equivalent of paving, but it's not paved. So I'm asking the town council to approve it without paving. And any questions?
So clarification, Mr. Lampy, are you asking the council for permission not to pave the driveway that leads back to the storage area, or to include not paving the storage area as well?
That's correct. No paving at all.
No paving at all.
I colored it in yellow, is the area would have to be paved according to town ordinance. I'm asking the town board if they would consider allowing a storage yard of these repossessed cars without paving. The cost of the paving would be such for that much driveway, it would raise the rent too high for the tenant, and we would have to start all over. Any questions?
Mr. Lampy?
Yeah.
The front of this storage area, it's going to be fenced in as well, correct?
No, no.
It's not? I know the back and the side.
It's the very back, and I believe the fence on the cemetery side, but I'm not, I can't even remember.
The front of this.
The very back is a complete closure.
Yeah, there's already a fence at the storage area, correct? Where the vehicles would be stored, there is a fence.
We were going to landscape everything, the whole six acres, plus landscaping the storage area.
But you would leave the existing fence that's up?
That's correct.
Yeah, I know it's there. But once you get back there, is it going to be a fence where you drive up, according to this plan, where you drive up to it and then you open that?
It's up there already.
There'd be a fence there?
Yeah.
There's one already there?
Right.
That you allow the cars to go in and be stored there?
The yellow on the sheet is where the storage would be.
Okay.
So, Mr. Lampy, as I understand it, you're going to landscape around the yellow?
Whatever the town ordinance requires is what we will do.
Okay, but your fence is going to, you're not going to fence around your storage area?
Yes, yes, you fence around the storage area.
And just for clarification, maybe, Mr. Ambler, there is an existing fence there, to my understanding.
Basically pointed out here, it represents on your drawing with dashes and X's, but it goes across the property. There's a gate right here. It goes across the property, goes back down this property line, goes across the back, comes all the way down here and back up to here. It completely encircles that area right there.
That's what I.
But the storage area is not that big.
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah. So they may not utilize that entire area.
Does this client have other facilities similar to this?
Yeah, his headquarters is in Florence, South Carolina.
Okay, how can I ensure, or how can we ensure that something may turn into a junkyard? Because I'll be honest with you, we already have an eyesore there with Wendy's building.
Yeah.
If you don't want to pave it, it's not improving anything at all.
That's correct.
If it turns into a junkyard, it'll be even more an eyesore, which will irritate the citizens.
I agree 100%.
And I'm not going to tolerate that.
I had a client in Selma that started dismantling cars, and I had run them off.
How would you do that, would you stop?
So, Mr. Wood, if I may, this is a conditional use request, so we can place, or this board can place conditions on it, and one of the conditions could be that there would be no storage of junk vehicles there, and then we would need to define what a junk vehicle is, since we don't have that defined in our ordinance. So that's just, you know, just a thought.
Good idea.
You also cannot, however reasonable it may or may not be, you can't waive the road. That is a requirement of the particular classification in the code. So you'd have to come back and amend the code. I'm not saying that the road needs to be paved, but the code says a road needs to be paved for these particular uses. So we have to have a paved road, or you have to change the code. You can't make it a special exception. You can, in this conditional use, add additional conditions to the property in addition to the characteristics of that particular use. So, you know, this particular use has a characteristic that includes paved roads, which is required. You can add additional conditions to it, which would say that any use of the property cannot include a junkyard or the sale of car parts or dismantling of cars, or repair of cars. That's an additional condition, that we really can't waive conditions, remove conditions, we can just have.
I wasn't saying waive the conditions, not pave it.
I wanted to be sure.
My question to him was, he is not wanting to pave it, and that was his recommendation, that was what he just spoke to us about.
I did.
But I don't want to have it, I thought the UDO said we had to pave it. I don't want it to turn into a junkyard.
I understand your condition.
That's my fear of that.
I understood that, Roger. I just wanted to be sure that the board didn't think that you could waive it.
Okay.
Because I didn't want you to even start going down that route.
I wasn't implying that at all. That's not what I was implying. I was just iterating what he had recommended, waived it.
Well, of course, the state of North Carolina considers the type of gravel surface there as impervious surface.
It may be a good idea, Mr. Lampy, and it may be a better idea, and it may be something the board wants to come back and look at. And I know the difference between impervious and perfect, and we're moving towards more and more pervious surface right now under our code. That's the rule.
Does that affect your position, Mr. Lampy, or does that affect your application?
Yeah, yeah. We just have to dismiss the whole thing.
We just want to table it for now?
No, just cancel it. We just won't rent it.
Sounds like a good idea.
Thank you, Bob.
So is that the wishes of the applicant, is to withdraw this application at this time?
No, I'd really like to rent it.
I don't know any way you could do that, except for variance. I probably, it probably doesn't meet a variance. You'd have to come back into the code, amend the code, put a classification that prevented, that permitted in certain situations, which this situation would have to include, an unpaid road. Right now, you've got a classification that requires a paved road. We just can't get around it. It's like a red stoplight, it's red. Can't go on, can't go on red.
So do we have any other comments from anyone else that's been sworn to speak on this matter? Seeing none, do we have any other questions from the council?
I believe we closed the vote here.
Second. All in favor? All in favor, say aye. I move. Any other discussion from the council at this time? Okay, this is time we will move to the findings of fact. We can either go through them individually. If so, I would need a motion and affirmative for all four findings of fact. If not, then we would need to go through each finding of fact individually and have a motion on each one of them. It's the pleasure of the council.
He's asked to withdraw it, isn't he?
No, he said he did not want to withdraw it. I can ask one more time, Mr. Lampy, would you like to withdraw it at this time? So that the council could take under advisement if we wanted to change the ordinance?
It would be 24 months before you could reply, apply again for...
And that, that would be the same case if we were to?
What's, what's the good news?
So, so quite... Yeah.
He said he withdrew it.
I'm sorry.
He said he withdrew it.
We can still vote on it.
So, so, Mr. Lampy, I'll go back to you. Would you like to withdraw it? Did I hear you say that?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Madam Clerk, so note that the applicant has withdrawn his application for CUP 14-07. Thank you. Somebody would please go get the mayor? I'll turn it back over.
You know, I do have a question. After the fact, and I'll direct that to whoever, you know, we have this planning board who approves this unanimous stuff that comes in front of us, and yet we have our town attorney telling us that...
We can do it.
You know, are they not getting good advice, are they not doing their job, or are we not doing our job, or? Or what? I mean, uh...
We still could have approved it, if we just had conditions. That's wrong.
Right, right. Yeah, and I think the approval from the planning board, and I don't know what the discussion was, Mr. Ambler, if you were there, if Mr., or Mark was there, but... But it would, yeah, it would be approved, meeting all conditions, including pavement.
Planning board approved it with paving.
I'm sorry?
Planning board approved it with paving.
With paving, yes, that's right.
They understood the idea. It was changed to not.
No, 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 no.
No, he, he, he asked for, he requested...
At tonight's meeting, he asked for it not to be paved. And then he wanted to withdraw because we had no other choice but to pave it, and therefore we had to pave it, he didn't want to move forward with the project. Mayor?
Correct. Can I take over now?
Yes, sir.
A lot of changes since you've been out of the reins.
Am I no longer the mayor? You can take a seat over here.
We're not stupid, yes, you're still mayor.
Oh, my God, all right. Let's go to some business items, some happy, easy things. Oh, consent agenda first.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, citizens' comments. We're going to open up the session for citizens' comments at this time. Any citizens like to make any statements? All right? Okay, business items. Number one, consideration to request mill eligibility certificate for the water treatment plant. Town manager Paul Sabiston, tell us all about it.
Mayor, thank you, and Sarah Edwards from the DSTC is also present on this matter. DSTC has requested that the town approve and support by a letter. Basically, it's a preservation of a, of a tax credit, and it would, it would be for the, the old water plant. And what this is, is basically it's creating a tax credit under our current law that would be, as far, as long as we, as far as we know, would be in perpetuity, basically. That tax credit would be there for a new developer, someone who wanted to develop that, develop that property and receive a tax credit, which I believe combined, Sarah, help me here, I think it would be the 50% total. So 40%, 40% total, if they were to develop it. There's no pending project, there's no pending request, but if we don't do it by the end of December, I believe, we want, that option won't be there any longer. So all it is, is preserving it, might give somebody a leg up and wanting to develop it. But again, there's nothing pending, nothing in mind right now, and they're just looking for the endorsement of council to do so.
I move we approve the action request. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries. All right, we're on your agenda, it's item number two, which we're skipping over because we're delaying that. No, we put that in consent agenda. Item number three, consideration to enter into an agreement with an engineering consultant. And planning director Paul Imbush, you want to tell us about that?
Just to summarize this very quickly for you, due to long terms of seasonal high water in the Neuse River, we've had some bank erosion down there. If you've been down there, you, you know what I'm talking about. But immediately below the Boy Scout hut between the two bridges at the end of Bridge Street and the back of the LBJ, we've had about 100 foot of bank that has just sloughed off into the river. It has actually undermined the greenway. That portion of greenway is poured in concrete. If it had been asphalt, the asphalt would have already been down in the river also. But the concrete is, we put fiber in it, so it's, it's holding, it's sewn right now, but it can't bear any traffic on it. I've had one engineer to come initially, Kimley Horn, which is the, you have his email that he sent back in regard to that. And then I've also had, most recently, last week, Hazen and Sawyer Engineering Firm out of Raleigh came down. This is very specialized engineering. It's not every day that anybody does this, the firms that do it are far and few in between. I have consulted with DWQ, Division of Water Quality, as well as the Corps of Engineers. This can be processed as an emergency repair initially, but that will not be a long-term fix, that will be an interim fix. It could last one year, it could last five years, it could last 10. But there would be kind of an immediate repair and then look at it in the long term, is what I've asked the engineers to do. This will require notification of work, and since this is waters of the US, where you just can't go down there and fix it. You have to say, may I? Beforehand, and you have to send a letter of notification to the Corps of Engineers. And I do not personally have those expertise to draft that letter and put the supporting documentation to it that the Corps of Engineers need, needs. But we can't move forward until we do that. If we do nothing, we risk further damage to the greenway. In addition, we're only probably two feet away from exposing the main sanitary sewer outfall from North Smithfield in Selma to the plant. So there needs to be some repair. I've also contacted JP Edwards Construction Company, who is a firm the town uses a lot of times for emergency repairs. And he's aware of it and has some, would be willing to help if we get to the point of getting approval from the Corps. The interim repair basically will be dump a lot of riprap into the river. And, and shore up the bank so that no further erosion will occur. The long-term fix is a process called encapsulation, earthing encapsulation, which basically you build earth gavions and you stair-step the riverbank and reestablish the riverbank to its original condition. Very long-term, very expensive. But that's going to be the long-term. But right now, we have nothing budgeted for repairs other than that we've got to do something, or we're going to definitely lose the greenway, and we're probably going to lose the main sewer outfall for North Smithfield.
Did we have to get engineering help when the greenway was put there to begin with?
Uh, we did most of that in-house.
This could happen all along where that trail is close proximity to the riverbank.
It's going to happen.
It, um, on the outside bend right, right there, further erosion will occur. What happened there, we, when we did the greenway, Councilman Ashley, I retained the services of a guy in McKimmon Creed. Well, I didn't retain it, he did it as a favor to me, he was a former employee of mine. And I asked him to look at it, and he gave the town a proposal of what it would take to fix it at that time when we did the greenway. And it was going to be upscale, about $150,000 to $200,000, which we did not have in the budget. The state, we consulted with them at that time, and they said maybe it would be best when the problem occurs, and maybe you'll be lucky, and it will be 50 years from now and you won't have to worry about it. But it, it really occurred in about five years. There was an old tree that was down, there on the riverbank, and it fell into the river. And once the root system went with that tree, that's when this process started accelerating. And it's just gotten worse with time, and it's going to continue to get worse.
I walk that trail twice a week. I can tell you, a much, and a much cheaper fix is, there's enough room on the, you know, there's a, there's a street, there's a steep embankment, there's the concrete, nature wall, and then there's the river. In this case, the embankment has pretty much undermined itself and kind of slid off there, and it's kind of undermined the concrete. If we just went over and cut into the embankment 10 feet, which there's plenty of room, and made a retaining wall, and then just, instead of your sidewalk being nice and straight, and get to that spot and kind of zig around it and then go back on, you could do it all without any of these permits. And I don't know about the sewer line part, but if it's...
We couldn't do that.
Why not?
It's jurisdictional waters of the US, and it's a riparian buffer, and...
I'm talking about digging uphill.
Unless you go almost up to the back of the curb there, from the high, from the bank of the river, 50 foot uphill, measured horizontally, not vertically, with, not with the ground, you can't touch it. The only reason we got the greenway where it was now was by virtue that there was a previous greenway that existed prior to the riparian buffer on the Neuse River. And to go up the hill, you'd have to go all the way up and basically make it a sidewalk in order for that to happen. We even looked at that as an alternative of where the greenway could be located. And if, if we had owned a Boy Scout hut at that time, we probably would have done it. But we didn't own the Boy Scout hut at that time, because it would have to go. And the other...
It needs to be fixed. My understanding, I want on the council, but there was grant money, the Mountains of the Sea Trail, or some grant money that helped construct that greenway.
Actually, it was DOT, DOT, bike and ped money from the federal government.
Is there any such money to do these repairs?
Not that I know of, but I'll be happy to check into it.
Yeah, and you say it has to be fixed, but you're not going to be able to fix it. It, it's never going to be, it's going to be a cash cow, it's going to constantly cost money to keep that afloat. It's going to be hurricanes, high water, we've had issues with high water over there where it's closed off. So it's another one of those nice, warm, fuzzy boondoggles that's going to cost the town money ongoing.
I agree with Perry, it sounds like we're going to spend $200,000 to fix 30 feet of sidewalk.
Every five years.
Well, I think, I'm sure they can fix it because...
It could be every five.
You know, we put a bridge over a lot of places over there. It's just about, it seems like it'd be cheaper just to lay a bridge right on top of that spot and just...
Well, that's not going to solve the problem with the sewer line. The sewer line is a 24-inch ductile iron sewer pipe. And it's laying right under that greenway. Matter of fact, if you go down there, you'll see the green line painted on the greenway.
It's been a couple of weeks since I've been there, but is it still half the sidewalk cordoned off with the orange?
Yes.
So you still go, and I'm just wondering how safe that is?
Short of putting everybody up on the road and bringing them back down, that was the only thing we could do, you know? We could go and put chains on each bridge and cut it completely off of that section.
I think we've got a liability sitting there, too.
Yeah, I mean, we have to fix it, I'm just, I just...
Mr. Mayor, I didn't mean to cut you off, it would be a very difficult situation to permit that in, there in that location. I'm not saying that it can't be done, but it would not be an easy task. As it is, we're, we are entitled by the Nationwide 13 permit to repair it just by doing notification, emergency repair, which in this particular situation would be doing riprap.
We're going to have to hire an engineer no matter what, and we're going to have to do the emergency repair no matter what, so...
You are? We just close it?
I like walking on it every day.
We'll just do a little turnaround, U-turn, you can just go to circle and come back, and go to circle and come back. We better put, we better plan next year when we have the budget to allocate money for the greenway and start building up a fund to have...
Repairs.
To do repairs on an ongoing basis.
We've got all the joys of ownership. All right, well, we've got a, um... I'm looking for a motion, I've got a question. Okay, and a question.
Paul, you said you had three quotes, right?
I, I, I have asked three different engineering firms. I asked Kimley Horn, Hazen and Sawyer, and McKimmon Creed. McKimmon Creed declined because of current workload. Hazen and Sawyer could not come until last week. Kimley Horn was the gentleman who came immediately the next day after I called him. And they were very responsive. The gentleman from Hazen and Sawyer has indicated that it would be, he hasn't given me a firm price in writing yet, but it was going to be substantially more than Kimley Horn's. I have not let him know, of course, what Kimley Horn's price was.
Any other questions for Mr. Ambler?
Right now, we're looking to approve $1,000 to get the study done, is that correct?
Basically, it's to write the letters to the Corps of Engineers of notification with the supporting documentation. If you'll notice, in, in my write-up, I said, this assumes that the plans for the greenway and the geotechnical information that we currently have will be suitable. The gentleman from the Corps that I talked to has indicated that he will accept it. So I think it will be. We, we have one boring between those two bridges, is all that I have, is one boring. And it may or may not be representative of where the actual problem is.
Need a motion?
I need a motion.
I move to, move to submit the letter to, did you say Deaner?
It's actually, we'll go to the Corps of Engineers. Deaner, DWQ has to sign off on it. They have to do the 404 part, process on that.
I move to submit the letter to the Corps of Engineers to construct the emergency repairs to the existing greenway.
And the...
And?
Hire the engineering consultant to do that.
And to hire an engineering consultant.
So just basically, your, your motion is to let them spend however much money they want to?
Up to a limited amount.
What, what I'd like to ask for is up to $5,000, because submitting the letter is one part of it, working with a contractor and establishing it, and, and doing a brief design of it, or the remainder of the money's there, so if you would be so gracious to authorize it up to 5,000. And we'll get, get the engineering we need done for that amount of money.
Up to $5,000 is your move?
Yes, if, if you read there, on item 1A, the first thing, which is prepared... Yes, i- if you read there, I don't know, item one A, the first thing, which is preparing the letter, is one thousand dollars. And if you just keep going on down, uh, well, it's under one A... Well, it goes over A B, A B. I'm sorry, I didn't realize that. But the first one says, "Alternatively, talking with it, um, I know recently we were able to obtain an approval from NC Flood Mapping in a similar situation with a simple quantitative description. If we did that, I think we could pair it for as much as a, uh, for a thousand dollars." Then it goes down there. To carry it all the way through, you need to add the other numbers up, which basically add up to five thousand dollars.
Okay, well, I'll add to, up to five thousand dollars, Madam Clerk.
I'll second the motion.
All right, I got a motion to second and discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Let me get a show of hands. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, raise your hand. Motion carries. Next item is item number four, authorization to advertise closing the right-of-way on two alleys. All in.
We have been petitioned by the owner, property owners of the block where, um, Collins Boatworks used to be, which basically lies between Massey Street and East Johnson, South Re, uh, South Brightleaf Boulevard, and Ninth Street are the railroad. There are two alleys on that property that are twenty-foot wide each. One, uh, they both have structures on top of them, so there is really no physical evidence of an alley on the ground. Uh, the, um, property owners on that block, uh, have decided they wanna market the property. It's one contiguous piece of land, as, as opposed to a bunch of separate parcels. Uh, this doesn't come very often when you have folks that want to get together and cooperate to, to clean up something that probably would never sell on its own. A few years ago, the town tried to, Chris Johnson tried to approach folks, uh, to assemble property to get Walgreens here, and couldn't, couldn't make it happen at that time. So, um, their request is, is to, for the town to take into consideration of closing those alleyways. You have two exhibits. You have the one, the property map, and the other one, the aerial photograph. And as you can see, there, there's encroachment by buildings on both of these alleyways. Um, the, if, if there are any utilities that exist in these alleys that are public utilities, they will have to convey an easement. So other than that, uh, the request from staff is, is for the council to take it into consideration and direct us to, uh, advertise for a public hearing and formally present it to you next month.
So we, we, we don't know that there's any utilities there or not?
No, sir, and...
Yeah, so I think that would be very important for us to know before we entered into any such type of agreement, is to actually know if we have utilities there. I understand about the easement, but some things could come up between, uh, now and then. If we approve this, that, that the property owner can say, "No, you know, not going, not going to do that," and so forth. So my recommendation, until such time that we know that we have any easements or need to utilize this, that, uh, that we would postpone this issue.
Well, what we would do as part of the process of bringing it to you next month would have those answers for you. I mean, we just have not had staff time to go out there and physically try to get on the ground and see if there are utilities there. But that would be part of the staff due diligence in preparing your information packet for next month.
Was that a motion, Councilman?
Oh, we got a motion.
I move that we approve the request. But we, Andy, this is getting the ball started. This is a decision of our...
Yeah, I don't, I don't really know why it's before, so...
I've got, I've got a motion, I got a motion to authorize, to advertise to close the right-of-way to two alleys.
Okay.
And I've, and I've got Emery's motion to, to, to approve this request.
In the future, if we don't have all the information, I'll try and play with this.
Yeah.
Good question.
I, I think for the advertising, we have to, we have to...
Regardless, we need to have all the facts before we talk about it.
Yeah. Why wouldn't we direct staff to see if there's any utilities on the ground before we go forward and...
I agree with that.
We'll have to advertise for a couple of years.
Paul, do you normally do all the checking first, or do you, in this case, you've got us approving it before you've even checked?
The, um, we do it as part of the process bringing it to you. We don't pre-check them, because it's kinda like, which comes first, the chicken or the egg? If you guys don't wanna consider it, why should we spend all our staff time getting ready for it if you don't wanna take it into consideration? So I'll do it either way that you want, but, uh, normally, um, we're gonna go back to the property owners. They pay for the advertisement. The town doesn't pay for the advertisement. It's covered in their application fee. But there is, uh, there's a desire from their behalf to start the process, 'cause there's about a sixty-to-ninety-day process that this has to go through, so...
So if the concern is whether it's underground utilities, is that what I understand?
Sure.
So how would we find that out? How long would it take you to find out? You're, you and your staff, how long would it take you to find out if there, if there's...
Less, less than twenty-four hours.
Can, if you can find the maps.
No, you could, you could call the, um...
Can you assist with that?
I, I'm not, I'm not aware of any of this on that property, but I'm, I'm studying if you ask me.
Well, I guess the question, how long will it take you to figure that out? Mayor, I'm just saying twenty-four hours.
Well, you, you could call, to check to see if, if there's anything currently under the ground, you can, you can call the one eight-hundred number, you know, before you dig whatever. They'll tell you what's under there. But in terms of easements and some bigger things, uh, that, that part, I don't know. We may need some...
You assist, Mr. Mayor, without care.
Okay, but get, getting back to the, what we have on our plate right now. Emery, do you still wanna make a motion to, to authorize this?
I made the motion.
He's made a motion.
For lack of second, but motion.
I'm, I'm looking for a second for Emery's motion right now. There's no second. Motion does not carry. Item number five, Westside Beautification Project. Paul Ambler.
Okay, um, going over this, um, with you is, um, is part of the process that we started several months ago. Councilman Harrison and, um, Bob Worsham and Lenny Branch have, um, previously met with most of the property owners out there. And, um, all the property owners, to my understanding, were, um, uh, wanting to know more information about it and, uh, what, to see what is actually proposed. So this is the next logical step, which is, um, a, a brief side analysis that was done, and then a conceptual design that was done, so that we can actually, with your permission from the council, with any recommendations that you have, we'll take that plan and go talk with the property owners, uh, and, uh, show them what, what is in thought, the thought process of going forward with it. Now, you have the, the small packet, the eight-and-a-half-by-eleven and eleven-by-seventeens, and I'll just explain briefly what those are. The, um, the ones with yellow highlighter on it and pink and blue, those basically show the, the yellow represents the area of potential landscape, where it could be. In other words, that's what's inside DOT's right-of-way. That is technically DOT's property. And the, a lot of the properties on US Seventy West actually encroach into that yellow area. DOT's concerned with this, and the reason why they want to participate in it is to make it safer. By making it safer, they look at limiting the number of driveway turn-ins. Now, what they're asking is, is nothing that they wouldn't ask for any developer or any owner upgrading their property, that if they wanna access US Seventy West, they would have to file for a driveway permit. And, uh, that would be granted, uh, through a DOT process. In this, what is proposed here, the town would be the advocate for the property owners in obtaining these. We would do basically one big driveway permit for everything within this planning area.
You're only realigning driveways. You're not, are you gonna remove some driveways?
There are some driveways that would be removed. Some of them are continuous driveways with three and four-hundred-foot of frontage. They would be put down in a, a means that would be permissible by DOT if it were a new development in that lot. So some driveways, some people, DOT has, they allow so many driveway entrances per linear foot of road frontage. They allow certain-sized driveways. And basically, they're either twenty-four-foot-wide driveways, or they're thirty-six-foot-wide driveways. And on these, this, uh, side analysis, the, where the yellow areas are, yellow air, excuse me, where the pink arrows are, are where access points go to the various properties. Um, the, um, and if you'll notice, there, there's highlights there, uh, on the analysis of, if it's a driveway cut, there's a dimensioned request there of either twenty-four or thirty-six-foot-wide driveway cuts, primarily dealing with whether there's truck traffic coming and going from those lots or not. If there's truck traffic, we went with the thirty-six. If there's not, we, we proposed a twenty-four. Uh, in addition, sometimes the driveway cuts are much too close together. Uh, we've made recommendations that they be combined. In other words, a common driveway shared on the property line. Uh, this is done quite often. Um, the most recent that was being constructed in the town is where the new Family Dollar is going on Three-O-One South. There's a shared driveway there. Uh, DOT, uh, is very particular about how many driveway cuts are, are in there. No one would be denied a driveway cut out here. There are some parcels that you see that do not have driveway cuts shown to them, and that's primarily because they're vacant properties. There's nothing there, and they are basically residential properties. Um, so let me just kinda walk you through this, uh, in the packet. The, the more rendered version, which is what's up on the wall, it's a little easier to read. But the purpose of that side analysis is, number one, determine where you could possibly do it, where are the conflicts and where are the driveway cuts that we forgot to talk about.
So, starting here at the bridge, coming across the river, we have a lot that only has probably less than fifty feet before the next lot starts. It's mostly flood plain down in there. It's a low area. It is that there's currently a dirt driveway into that property. There's no building on it, anything other than cars that are being parked off of this lot into that property is what's there.
Which page are you, on my sheets was knowing?
That would be sheet number five.
They did not mark the streets on here and the lots. Well, the green ones they did, but the yellow ones they didn't. But you're on the yellow page number five?
No, I'm going, going to the rendered side lines.
The gr, the green ones?
Yeah.
And I'm looking at number five?
Yeah.
Yeah, the green ones are marked.
Okay, and then, this is the car lot. This is I and R Auto. And we've had a number of heavy forces issues with them, parking in the right-of-way, blocking traffic, not having adequate parking. And what we're proposing is, that says there's limited frontage on Seventy here that they share a common drive.
Have you spoken to the property owners about this?
What I, I just said was that this is in preparation to sitting down and talking with the property owners. We should go with them without a plan.
Oh, man. The property owners have all been, property owners have been contacted. Lenny and myself contacted, and there may be one out there somewhere, a small piece, that wasn't contacted. But basically, as far as I know, they've all been contacted. The property, not tenant. And they've been told that their beautification plan, we had a rough drawing, it was very rough compared to this, and just said, "Look, guys, we wanna do a beautification project. It's gonna change entrance and exits. You're not gonna, you know, you're gonna have a designated entrance and exit." And that was basically what was discussed with them, and no one complained. The only exception was, and Mr. Ambler will get into it at some point, I'm sure, that there were, is at least one landowner who had an issue with being able to bring tractor-trailers into their property. And I saw, I see where he's giving them a thirty-six-foot-wide opening instead of a twenty-four-foot. So to answer your question, uh, it was just a preliminary drawing. I'm sure this may bring out something different than what we had, and there's no tenants that were contacted.
If, if you've contacted the landowners, you've done more than this town has normally done in the past. And, and I understand out of, out of fifty landowners, you can't make everybody happy.
I can't answer that. Uh, the shock to me was, we didn't have anybody jumping up and down and screaming. But the reason we wanted to approach it this way is because we wanted to be successful.
Build the consensus, I think.
It's something that many people feel like needed to have been done for a long time. So we've got to the point, there probably may be some conflict. A- as, if you read in here, the presentation will be made to us tonight. We'll get them to go ahead to go forward, which means they will go now and meet with the landowner, show them this plan, and massage it to the best of their ability, and eventually, there may be somebody we have to deal with that doesn't like it. But at this point, there's not been that throwback. It's not gonna work.
Uh, that's, that's a good job. I'm sorry, Paul, go ahead. Thank you. Perry?
So, we were proposing a common drive here. This is the old, uh, convenience store gas station. These are their two existing driveway turn-ins, which are non-standard. The only thing that we're calling for them is to remain there. And the reason why is because they have pump access on this side and pump access on this side. It's ever reopened. And so you couldn't just channel it into one drive. So we, we kept those two. The only thing that we're showing there is that there would be made standard twenty-four-inch driveway, uh, twenty-four-foot driveway connections. This is the town's wastewater pumping station. Obviously, we need access to that. Um, this is a, um, Shirley, Doug Shirley's property. And you see these two buildings, they will reuphere here. And what, what we have done, I've talked with Mr. Shirley in the past, and he's currently coming back in with us to put a, something on this lot right here. There's nothing there right now. But what I have suggested here are potential subdivisions of land that would allow him to have different car lots out there, basically configuring what he's got there now. But each one either has its own access point like this one, like this one. This is an existing driveway. This is an existing driveway, so it's not, it's not taking away anything there. This one is a wood drive. We're proposing a shared drive here, this lot and this one, just mainly because there's so many there, and there's a large power line coming through this lot, which actually limits where they can access it. We have another shared drive shown here, shared drive shown here. This is a thirty-six-foot driveway, because there's a big warehouse down there. There are trucks that come and go, so it's got a larger drive. On this side, this is either DSDC or Master Weld Builders. They have one twenty-four-foot drive access matching right up where they are now. Nothing on the DSDCs or Doug Shirley's property is vacant right now. This is, um, Donald Wallace's property. He has an existing driveway cut that lines up, and is proposing that to be standard. And this is the old Wallace welding shop with the, uh, car repair facility, our customer shop there now. In order to try to accommodate the truck traffic that comes into the welding spot, we're showing two driveways where a truck can come in and pull back out. The reason why is there's not enough room here to back in to get to Mr. Wallace's building. Just for your information, this is DOT's right-of-way, and this is the face of this building, which that distance there is less than twenty feet. So for all these years, that piece of machinery and all those bars and cans and everything that are out there are actually in DOT's right-of-way. Um, coming further on that, um, heading toward... Coming further on that, heading toward, this is NC two ten back up here. This is, this is the last resort. Due to the configuration of the land, it breaks, it's a bad place to break the page. But there's parking on this side of the building, so we gave them a drive over here. There's a parking area on this side of the building, so we gave them a drive there. And the property line here, not quite represented right, is really about six foot off the stoop of the building. The stoop is not shown on here, but there's very little room there. This is the old Ideal Mark, C A Bird owns that. Right now, it's one continuous open drive. This is where the pumps are, this is where the building is, the convenience store. We're proposing a line so he can come in and line with the pumps. And then there's an existing drive out the back already to this drive here, so he would be able to come back out here. This is a warehouse building. This is a thirty-six foot drive. Come here, this is Willy Ho Sales. Right now, they have a drive here, and a drive here, and then we have Parish Drive there, which goes back to the second tank and the concrete plant. And this is not a town road, this is a private road. And so, that's maintained, but the problem with this is safety, is having one entrance here so close to that, and DOT would probably only grant one entrance right there. So, this one, we're actually talking about making a recommendation, going away, only going to one entrance. Make this a street type turn-in instead of a driveway turn-in. This is the Roy Whitley's business. There's a truck repair facility in there now. It's one access here, and then they, there's already an existing access right about here that goes in there off that road. Fox Repair is basically lining up with these existing driveways right here and here. And then DJ's property, that's a big vacant lot, had trucks parked on it for the longest time, but it's just a twenty-four foot drive. And then the tanning bed places in there, and we're showing with them two drives. And the reason why is because their parking is actually about fifty percent in the DOT driveway. I don't know how it ever got approved, but years ago it was. And so, we're showing them a drive here that'll allow them to still use the parking across the front of the building. But this island, even though it's in DOT, is, if DOT will agree to let that stay, then they can still keep that for parking, and just loop in and loop back out, and it lines up with their other parking. This is a vacant lot. The town owns this lot. These are residential lots that do not show any driveway connection. They would all be entitled to a twelve foot driveway connection if anything was built on there, or if it was a commercial lot, then they'd get a twenty-four foot driveway. This is the church, Vernon Bush Church. Existing driveway, existing parking lot, and they use this as an overflow area here. So this one also would be proposed as a twenty-four. This is the town cemetery, so there's no need for access there. And you're coming on up here, this is Campbell Street. This is Markham Street Investments, Johnny Dupree, the accountant. He has a driveway cut there, he's just making a standard cut. This is a thirty-six foot driveway that does serve his building as well as this convenience store and gas pumps. Does that be a thirty-six there, just because it's, it's a shared drive on the property line, with no realignment there? Over here at the old Wendy's Store, that would just stay the same, just rest them up, clean them up. And I think that's pretty much all, except for, right over here, this is the Plan B bar. It's to straighten those drives up. This is the tattoo place, straighten that up. And then this is a small garage, it's a, it's made of pictures, no garage, right there, and provide a driveway access there.
So, really, we tried to keep where the existing driveway accesses were, but instead of having a property that had four hundred linear foot of road that they could just drive off anywhere they want to, which is a real safety hazard, is putting the fine points in there as close to the location of the existing accesses to the property as we could determine, with a few closings and a few shared drives.
Who prepared these drawings?
I did.
So DOT has not looked at these or anything?
No. They said, after the town is happy with them, and the property owners are happy with them, then the town council, if they, if you so accept it, or you want to modify it, once you're happy with what they got, they want you to take a, pass a resolution, and then the county, then DOT will start their process of working through this. And that may result in some changes, because I'm not a roadway design engineer, but I have sat down and reviewed it with them, and preliminarily, they're in agreement with it, and willing to participate in it to some extent.
We did the same thing years ago, but it wasn't as elaborate, and we didn't talk to the property owners. We changed driveways and displanings. As long as we're talking to the property owners and they're buying into it, I'm happy. It's good for everybody, but.
Who presented this?
We started talking about cutting, changing driveway cuts, and pulling down roadside, and that's, that's a sensitive subject.
And, just to add one thing, you can't really determine what landscape you're doing until you determine where the driveway cuts are there. So that's why I made a recommendation of where the driveway cuts are, because they establish the landscape areas once the cuts are established.
So would we, if?
And let.
Just go on just a few moments. You have this in a smaller version in your document, this is straight out of DOT's roadway landscape design manual. We're trying to, as best we can, we can't in all situations mimic this planning scheme. You also have a list of the trees and the shrubs that they were allowed to be used out there within their driveway. So I included those as part of your package. And the other thing you'll notice on here, I proposed of where there could possibly be a sidewalk, and if, particularly the side of the road, on the upstream side of the river, that is heavily walked from the neighborhoods out in the McDonald's area. There's a lot of foot traffic that comes that way, and we have a number of people that have come in saying, when's the town gonna put sidewalks up there? Well, it may be more of a question when DOT and the town can put sidewalks out.
Paul, did you design this on a method that would be, the cost would be covered by what DOT has agreed to pay?
It's, it's designed to be phased. DOT has indicated that there is certain monies that they would have immediately available, and there's other monies that they would have to program over several years in order to accomplish it. The first thing is get the overall concept down, get buy into it through the property owners. Council take action on it in the form of a resolution, asking DOT to assist. And then, once we get to that point, DOT will be very definitive in how they will help us.
Speaking of sidewalks as well, this is kind of off-subject, but we take a right off seventy, on Wilson Mills Road, there's been several residents in the West Smithfield District has requested some type of walk-through or sidewalk on Wilson Mills Road. There's tons of foot traffic on that road. So you may just, if we're talking about that, throw that in the mix as well, or do some research on that, because it's really needed down on Wilson Mills Road. Now, again, that's off-subject of this, but that's just for FYI for you to look into.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Originally, DOT said they had the money to pay for this project. You hear me? You hear what I said? DOT said they had the money to pay for this project. That's been over a year ago now. We don't know, we think that they'll still fund it. However, we'll have to maintain it. So, it's not a free ride for the town. Once it's installed, we'll have to be involved in maintaining it.
So they will fund it, won't they, essentially?
No. My plan is they're gonna pay for it. But that was a year ago when they said they had the money, so things can change. That was my understanding, and that was our understanding.
Well, we still, we need to move forward. They're not gonna pay for it if you don't move forward. We know that.
Well, that's probably a good observation.
Well, I think it's a good plan. I think we need to proceed forward. Obviously, we know this plan is not instantly stoned, it may be modified by a property owner or comment or whatever, but we need, we need to move forward.
So, are you making a motion that we direct staff to go to the property owners and try to work out a finalized plan to come back to us, to present to us, for review and comment? Is that what your motion is?
Well, that's what you were asking for tonight, wasn't it?
Yes.
Is that what your motion is?
Yeah, I want to approve the preliminary site plan. I'm moving to approve the preliminary site plan for staff to begin working with the property owners and DOT. All property owners, you see.
I second that motion.
Any discussion about the motion that's out now? Not? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion cares. We need a resolution too, don't we?
Not right now. Not, not to a finalized plan as adopted.
Discussion on IT assessment. All saveston.
Ma'am, I'll give you some additional information. You may recognize that on the IT assessment. That was what we looked at at the work session about two weeks ago. So I thought that was some, it was actually some more up-to-date information, and I'll just summarize that very, very quickly. If you recall, we had an IT assessment that a, that a group, Alpha Numeric helped us out, presented that report about two months ago. And they made a few recommendations, six of them, and they were in order of the ones that I think have the highest priority. One was a replacement and purchase of new workstations, including basically desktop computers and some monitors. That was number one. Number two was an email in the cloud, to really address some storage of email problems, so we can access it, find it's automatically stored on a server of sorts that does not require you to basically go to a, your own archive system and store it individually, desktop by desktop. You know, there's been some issues with email collection in the past, and it would address those issues. And it's a fairly common practice in these days to have that employee, you know, business email stored just automatically. Anyway, to summarize some of the discussion, I know we've gone over this before, couple of things. One, on the IT assessment report, there was a rough estimate of about thirty workstations, and that is, that is an accurate estimate. Brian Adams, our IT specialist, has gone through and looked at them. Thirty is the, is the best number. The rough number was twenty-eight thousand dollars, roughly a thousand dollars for, for the PC and/or a monitor total. Brian actually found a little bit better deal there. His total number is closer to about twenty-one, twenty-two thousand dollars for the actual workstations, and there's a little bit of an inventory there in your, in the material I just passed out to you. If you look on page three, it gives you a little bit of a count there between actual PCs and monitors, and there's one laptop included there. He found a much better price, so that brought that down a good bit. There is, though, a setup fee that Alpha Numeric would charge. Got to find out if that's something that we want to go with or not in terms of that setup. I think that's just assembling the workstations and getting them put together. You know, you get to a large number, it's a little bit more difficult. I think we could do that ourselves, frankly, but it would just take us a little bit longer to roll them out. Brian would do most of those, and he could do that. Just take a little bit longer to set them up, you know, get them up and going. If you went with the setup fee and Brian's a lower number, we think we could do all the workstations for about twenty-five thousand, two hundred dollars, and that would be thirty workstations as inventory in that, in that attachment there. So that's a workstation need assessment and how we think we can meet it. Secondly, is the email use, which was another one of the main recommendations. And basically, it's marked on the memo on one twenty-three. We just call it email in the cloud. And again, that's really looking at a secure email system, that one is a better system to communicate, you can include documents. Again, Brian went a little bit deeper in comparing the Google and the Microsoft email features, looked at them. There's some prices, if you look in the materials, again, the information I provided you. He kind of broke it down, and there's, really comes down to, if you want the highest level of email security and storing ability, for the Microsoft system, it's seventeen dollars per month per user. For the Google, which is called the Vault system, it was ten dollars per month per user. You know, I mean, we can talk all day along with like three sixty Microsoft or like Google, there's books written on it. I think you'll see in government, both of them are used. I think some, I know Travis couldn't be here tonight, I know he's got an interest in it. If I'm not certain, I think Travis was kind of a Google fan, he's used it with the county, I think he's very comfortable with that.
I spoke to Travis, the county's using Google. If he had his choice, he'd go to Google.
Yeah, so, and I'm comfortable with either one. I think Brian's assessment is that both the ten dollar Google feature and the Microsoft at the seventeen dollars are comparable, and they, but most importantly, they have that archiving feature, basically, that I think is the main reason we're going to this email difference.
My reflection is on the Microsoft three sixty or three sixty-five, which is what we use in my firm. That gives you free automatic updates to all of the Microsoft, Office, Excel, and everything they offer. There's no paying for that. My question would be, do we have any of that in town computers, and we have an device software, or when, you know, for seventeen dollars a month, it's included, you don't have to worry about updates? Everything is there? I just, I don't know, maybe Google. But I don't think Google has any.
I think the short answer is, is that you're paying the seventeen dollars, and you get the PowerPoint, the other features. Like you said, you get, you get everything. But I think the other side of that is, is that for the ones who need it, and we've already bought it, you know, we have it. And so, in a way, we're paying, everybody's paying seventeen dollars a month. One, they don't all need the PowerPoint presentation, very few need that. Or the, the Excel spreadsheet, for instance. They don't need that. And the ones that need it, we've already bought packages. I think we buy them at approximately, get about five users for a package. And so, really, it's kind of like the users who need them, we buy the packages, and then we'll buy them every three or four years, and we can share them, you know, as a group. And I, I know, I think I know where you're going with that, and I agree it's there, but I think Microsoft, and again, I'm a Microsoft fan, I mean, just going on record, I guess, but I think they make their money because you're paying for it every month and you get it, and so you're kind of paying for it over and over again. And that's okay for one or two, I think, but when you get to, you know, thirty or so, it may not be, I think we can target who needs those actual additional programs, and maybe it's a little bit more cost-effective. But again, I'm open, I'm just trying to present, you know, the ones that are there, the ten versus seventeen dollars.
You know, when I look at this, one of the first questions I have is, is obviously that laptop computer, fifteen hundred dollars, that's obviously not a, obviously that's an Apple product, because you can't hardly pay fifteen hundred dollars for a laptop computer.
That's right.
You know, and we need ten workstations and parking, right? They got more workstations than any other department, I guess.
It also includes up front, there's, does that include up front, Paul?
I'm sorry, include a what?
Desk. Gary.
Include a what?
Ten stations include the desk up front.
I believe so.
There's three stations there as far as check-in, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. To answer your question, I don't know.
So that's parking, wreck, and track.
That's right, that's right.
That's total.
Duh.
That's right.
Two separate, two separate parking lot, both. Oh, excuse me. Well, it just shows parking, right? And it doesn't show, there's none in track, right?
I, it would be both.
So, Paul, what are you recommending to us?
So, so Paul, what are you recommending to us?
Well, that's the, uh, that's the workstation, uh, the email cost. Um, again, going with the, uh, the $10 per month, which would be the Google, the Google email, um, you've got a total, uh, a total cost of, if you went with 30, which is the, the key, the higher end, 30, which I think we could get by with, which is basically supervisors, department heads who have the key emails that really need to be protected, archived. And then a cheaper version for the non-supervisor and above level, which is just used more for communication. And my view of that is if there's anything that we'd want to save and have to save, typically it's either going from a supervisor, department head to someone who may not have the full-blown feature or from that person to a department head or a supervisor. And either way, if it goes through that higher end, uh, email, it will be archived and saved. So we could save a little bit of money that way. But I use 30 and with that, you've got a $3,600 per year fee. And again, the estimated email setup fee was about $6,000, which would be a one thou, a one time, uh, fee for that. So you're talking about, um, approximately, um, uh, $12,000 for the, um, $12,600 for the setup and email for 30 users using the Google, uh, using the Google feature. Mayor, my recommendation, you know, the, the bigger list had actually four, five, six items that I do not think we should do, including the servers in the cloud. That's expensive. I think we need to spend a lot more time looking at that. If the council, and again, this was something that we've, uh, you know, we've talked about for a while. I think there's a recognition that, uh, we do need, we need to update our, um, our workstations and our email. And it would take something of a budget amendment. You know, that's a total, if you did both the workstations and the email, about $37,200. Present, we have budget and remaining in our budget, about $15,000 or $16,000 in things that would cover workstations or email and that's based on the general government line item, uh, of capital outlay. So that is still there. So if you went with both the workstations and the email, uh, you're talking about a, a need to amend or, uh, use about $22,200 from contingency. And, um, mayor, you know, I think the need is there for both of those. If the council, um, you know, again, uh, you know, we've talked about it a little bit, if you need some more feedback or some more specificity, um, on the workstations or you want, um, to do less on the workstations, do half this year and half next year, I think that's perfectly reasonable. And, um, you know, we could start with approximately 15 workstations this year, do the entire email with approximately 30. So that is an approximate number, um, for the supervisors. But again, there's another fee at about $5 a, a user for the lower grade, grade emails.
How much is, how much is each workstation?
Uh, it depends on the monitor or whatever. I mean, it's roughly about, yeah, about $700. Per workstation.
So this money you're proposing comes out of general government or it comes out of each respective department?
Well, I've got the, um, I've got some computer money. This was not part of the budget process at the time. There were some of it, more of the email, uh, which is, you know, I've got some monies there. And certainly I would look at any, any capital outlay, but mostly capital outlay in other departments, seeing as spending on equipment and that sort of thing. So this is the only real line on that's existing for email or, um, you know, computer upgrade expenditure.
How much was that total, Paul, you said?
In that line of not now? I think the total was 17,000 and a little bit more, and I think there might've been a thousand or so that's been used in that. So I think it's about 16,000 left.
That total cost.
Well, we're going the full blown would be 37,200. Right. And again, uh, you can back that down. You have the workstations at 30 is 25,200 or roughly, if you went with half of that, it would be, you know, approximately, you know, 12,500, you know, $13,000 in that range.
Patrick, when you replaced your computers in 2013, did that come out of your budget?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we, uh, direct the town manager to, uh, work this program into the budget for next year and make it part of the, the budget for next year.
Want to buy all the workstations at 30 workstations or 15 workstations?
I want to buy nothing. I want to postpone it until it's worked into the budget next year and we'll have time to talk about it.
And it might be wise to save some of the money in the existing budget you're talking about, let it carry over for this purpose. Next year. All right. Second.
Got a motion to second? All in favor say aye. All opposed? All right. Motion carries.
Paul, will that money carry? Do you anticipate having to use that money this year?
Uh, some of it, some of it, um, but, uh, you know, I mean, it doesn't, I mean, answer your question, I mean, what happens when you don't expend a budget lines? It just goes, you know, to a, a fund balance and then you, you can re-budget. So I mean, it's, it could be preserved, but, um, I think there are some, I mean, that, that was a line on that we've used in the past for things that break down, um, you know, computers, uh, not a copier, but scanners, that kind of thing. And, um, like I said, I think there's some that's already been allocated, but not much. Um, I think only a couple thousand dollars.
All right. And, and we're going to go into closed session at the very end of the meeting, so, uh, which is one of our items, but I'm going to move into council members' comments right now. Then let Paul finish up his report to us and then we're going to close session. So right now, I'm going to go to the council members' comments time. Any comments from council members about any items they'd like to bring up that's on their mind?
I'd like to say thank you to Paul Saveston, Paul Embleton, Lady Grant and Councilman Harris for all their efforts in the West Smithfield, the education project. I think it's going to be beneficial not only to the district forum, but obviously to the, to the entire town. So I appreciate all your hard work on that and look forward to seeing the rewards of our hard work for that. So thank you.
Any other comments?
Good to see Mr. Lamb in the audience.
Okay. Off the town manager's reports. Paul, anybody?
Uh, yes. Uh, mayor, just briefly, uh, my report, um, just a couple items I want to point out. One is the, um, well, it is official and it is, um, public now. The, um, in the Williams case, uh, against the town, uh, it's filed, uh, over a year ago now, um, the judge did grant an order, uh, that approved the town's motion for summary judgment against defendant Godwin's cross claims. That was, um, granted in our favor. And also, um, on the claims between Mr. Williams and defendant Godwin, the judge also approved all the claims dismissing the case, um, filed by Mr. Williams against the remaining claims, uh, filed by Mr. Williams against, um, defendant Godwin. So all claims, uh, have been dismissed in that case and, um, that occurred. It looks like the judge actually signed the order on Friday, but it wasn't filed or wasn't, we weren't presented with it until this morning. Um, and I've got a copy of those and those are filed in, uh, public record in the courthouse. So I want to make sure, um, everybody's aware of that. And certainly there is a, you know, potential for appeal on that, but that was, uh, that was just issued. Um, mayor, we have, uh, as you know, we're going through the audit process and it does appear that the auditor is going to present the audit. Um, it looks like, um, we hope to have it, uh, in December, um, either at the regular meeting or a special meeting, um, which you'll, as you'll recall, will be, um, more timely than it was last year. They seem to be wrapping it up. Mr. Tyler's done a good job in, uh, in pushing that and getting it done on time and, um, and very efficiently this year, I think. Um, some good preliminary news, um, if you recall that our fund balance for the general fund was at approximately 23% last year during the, uh, the end of the, end of the fiscal year. It looks like preliminarily that our general fund balance, uh, because of the strong showing on our revenue and the, um, conservative spending on the expenditure side, will increase from 23% to, uh, up to 38 to 40% range, um, as of the end of the last fiscal year, which is June 30th of 2014. And mayor, that also means that we'll be well above the targeted 25% of fund balance goal. That is part of our, um, our financial policy, um, which means we reached that policy in less than some two years. Um, I think we gave ourselves some four or five years to reach that, um, so we will have met that goal. But also, I want to also caution that, um, you know, part of the fund balance is a calculation of how much, uh, you have in your reserve funds versus what you spend in that budget year as an expense. So it's a calculation, it's a percentage. So if the amount stays the same, but you spend more in your expenditures for a year, like for capital projects or other expenditures, even if you, you have the exact same amount, your fund balance goes down because the percentage is, is, is lower. And so keep that in mind, these, these amounts can fluctuate a, a little bit without any kind of expenditures of the fund balance. And that's not a bad thing. The good news here is that our fund balance, uh, has grown in the last three and a half to four years from, let's just say, single digit extremely low to, um, approximately 40% now. And 40% is an extremely healthy and good, solid, uh, fund balance, uh, for a city in general and in for a city our size. So that's something to, um, I think to be applauded and something that, um, uh, we should be proud of. Um, other findings in the audit that'll come out, um, basically the electric fund, it had a good year. Um, it was some $400,000 approximately to the positive, um, which is a goo, a good number, the amount that came, or the, the finding that came out, the comment last year, which you recall, which related to debt, that, that will not be part of this audit. They are going to calculate it in a way that I think makes more sense, that, um, we're well above that, um, if we recall, that, um, that 20% kind of amount, uh, based on your debt. We're well above that. And frankly, I think had it been done in a, kind of more of a, of a general nature, we would've been in good shape last year even. So we've kind of worked out that calculation and, um, we're in, in good shape on that calculation, if you recall, uh, that finding from last year. On the water and sewer side, if you recall, we had some, um, large expenditures based on stormwater and the sewer side that really hit us hard in terms of, um, basically we're paying, uh, sewer processing fee, uh, for stormwater, um, with the heavy rains last year. Having some of that this year, but it's a lot, uh, much reduced and, and, and much less than it was last year. But that hurts a good bit, um, estimated some six, $700,000 in, uh, in additional cost. And the, the key point there is that there's a cost for processing rainwater, but, um, we can't charge anybody for that rainwater. So, you know, mother nature doesn't pay that bill to us. Whereas with regular sewer, we use sewer, you use more, you pay more to the county, but we have a, a client, customer that will pay for the sewer. On rainwater, there's no way to charge for it. So when we have a rainwater that's processed as sewer because of infiltration, then we just have to pay that straight. That's a complete, one way we pay out, we get no revenue in return for that. So we're working hard to eliminate that. It's a common problem in a lot of, uh, a lot of areas, most all have some level of infiltration. We think we're reducing that, but that was a problem for last year. But the, the result is that between our water and sewer, we're going to be short about $100,000 in, um, in expenditures. And I would say all of that is on the sewer side. Water actually did, did very well. It made up for a good bit of those losses, but it wasn't enough to completely cover the sewer losses. When we combine the water and sewer together, it's about $100,000 shortage from revenues over expenditures, which will be paid out of the fund balance for, uh, the water and sewer fund. So, uh, anyway, that's the preliminary report. Those numbers may change a little bit. Um, we're still working on the final management report to the, um, to the auditor, which we should have through, uh, tomorrow or the next day. And mayor, uh, just following up on, uh, Mr. Lane's presentation with the, um, the strategic plan, we want you to know that you've got copies and, uh, it's our intent to bind those and, uh, and do about 50 or so copies for the public to have and to pass out to councils. You've got, uh, an attractive version of that. We'll bind those. Uh, we think we can do them in-house and, um, have them available for both, um, both the council to have a good bound copy and also for the public. We should have that through, uh, or hopefully complete in the next, uh, the next week or so. That's all I have, mayor.
Thank you, Paul. All right. At this time, I'm going to, I'm going to, we're going to go into closed session and we'll go into the, I'll be going, I'm going to motion to go into closed session.
So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.